Good morning, welcome to the November twenty-fifth regular session of Board Supervisors Committee. Roll call please, Michelle.
Fran.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Curtinback?
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please join in the moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, received as proposed resumé. Sub move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item two, public comments. This is a time in the meeting for anyone to speak on an issue that's not on this morning's agenda.
Morning everyone, I'm Justin Jensen, Cedar Falls. Just wanted to say hello to everyone. Always like to get an update on the Senator John Ehrst's office. So just here to listen if there's anything we can ever do, feel free to reach out. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
We'll move on to item three, presentation from Elevate, the legislative seats.
Hello, Kira Roberts with Elevate.
I'm Paige Elevate.
Jenny couldn't be here today. She apologizes. She had an emergency surgery last week and some complications that prevented her from being here today. But in her place, we would like to thank you for us coming today. And our request is not a financial ask by the county, but it's simply an approval from the state of Iowa requires an approval that falls under your authority at this time. We currently operate an Irish home in your community. The home was built and approved structurally for five beds, but we are only authorized to operate with four. Adding this fifth bed will allow us to support an individual with unique and pressing needs while also stabilizing staffing and creating additional jobs once the home is fully staffed for five clients.
So you'd be sending, I was gonna sending us something on that as far as like an official approval of something for us to approve rather than just today like you said.
Yeah, yeah, we would need a, I believe we would need a letter of approval from, from the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, right now we currently have four in our home. Runs pretty smoothly. We have, we're building, I'm actually here and I'm building a program to work within the home. These help our individuals who have intellectual disabilities, mental health diagnoses, to come in who maybe are having a rough time living out like a lower level of community care, like a group home or something like that. So they come into our program, they live for around a year and a half temporarily. They come in, we teach, we help them build skill. Whether, and a lot of it is geared around like when someone becomes upset, how do we calm ourselves down? We all need a little help with that. I know I do. So we, we teach them how to do those skills and then eventually, you know, going on to how do we cook, just like the smaller things, how do we cook, how do we clean, things like that. And then once we feel like they're stable and ready to go, they step down and are able to live within the community with everyone else. So it's a great program and we've had, I've had four successful discharges. Yeah, it's just been great, so.
So what are the main purposes of the intensive residential homes that we're referring to is to keep folks out of institutionalized settings, keep them out of hospital settings, integrate them more into a community-based structured setting to help with those things that Paige had mentioned, especially with that crisis management and then gradually graduate from that program and then to either their own homes or a lower level of care to continue to be successful.
And you said you have four homes now?
Uh, we have five.
Five homes, yeah. All of those homes are currently four bed, but we're asking the counties to increase it one more bed.
Each one, if I want each one.
Yeah. I do just want, oh, go ahead.
No, no.
I was just gonna touch base. I do have a great success story. We served an individual, my first one that came into our home. He had been to the hospital two or three times a week for the past like six to seven years, kind of beat up his, no, we're not kinda, sorry. He had almost killed his mom because he was so aggressive. Came into my home, we helped him and now he, he hasn't been to the hospital almost a year. He's living a successful life. He actually has a job now and he just hasn't touched anyone in a very, very long time. So he did graduate from my program and is living in a group home setting, which he had not been able to do for so long, so.
How long are folks sort of resident?
Yeah, so it really just depends on the individual. But right now we're seeing, I've only been open for two years here in Waterloo and not quite a year in my other four, in our other four homes. But what we've been seeing is about a year and a half. Yeah, yeah, so.
That, that length can vary depending on the person and the needs and how quickly they, they work through the program too. But it is meant to be shorter.
So the county needs to, what, pass a resolution, support what, I guess what's our?
Well, I was, I was gonna say, I think, I don't think we've received anything official, so the official request to add to the board and then
You can press a little.
provide the information that you would like us to state in a, in a support letter and then we go from there.
Okay, yeah. Sure, yeah, sure, awesome.
And then if we needed questions answered or something, we'd get back in touch, but.
Yeah. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking today.
For minutes purposes, I just wanna, so you have four beds in your home and you wanna add another bed?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, claims and payments. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors approved expenditures that the county auditor de-authorized to run to issue payments against the various items of site claims. Sub move.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is five hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred, whoops, one hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Of that, the sixty forty fund, we're making a payment of three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. And we have a very long list today thanks to a little election we had recently. Total payments for elections, and that does include for some software and supplies, it's not only the officials, but the total is eighty-seven thousand three ninety-seven and thirty-seven cents. So not insignificant to run a major election. And the only other thing I would mention today is we are making our six-month interest payment on our bonds. That total is two hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions for me today?
Michelle, Board.
We don't currently have anything that would like make, just for full transparency of current balance for people to see where we're at, like with county finance, do we? Well, here's where this comes from. So Abigail Moss is running for state auditor and she's been talking about having something like that where it'd be some kind of software where you could see what the current state of government funding is, which I thought was kind of intriguing. That was interesting. So I didn't know if that was something.
There's actually a piece of software I would like to purchase. We don't have really the ability to do it very well right now. There's other cities and counties that can provide their whole checkbook online, you know, so people can see expenses and things like that. So when we get into budget, I will be requesting some of the details.
Just to be clear, you're thinking of something kind of like a budget amount where it shows where we budgeted and then where we're at throughout the year, like each month or whatever?
Yeah, so, so things come up in meetings and then for anybody who's, I don't know, watching that, they might have access. Go to the county website. This is in my mind, is what I picture, but they can just find, okay, see where we're at, what, in comparison to what the budget was.
I like that myself.
I was gonna say, that would be kind of nice.
We've talked about that before.
Well, right, right.
Yeah, you know, it's one thing to provide a budget performance, but you also have to remember, we, we work a little differently than commercial entities. So you really, it's not a good idea to live off your cash because there's a lot of things that happen over the course of twelve months that we don't spend evenly monthly. And just our, the way you track things is very different for governments. So the budget performance reports, I think would be more useful in that regard.
I trust your judgment.
The problem is when, I, I know we've, we've talked about this about a year ago, to really give you, I mean, all the budget performance reports, I think it's, I'm happy to give them, but it was over a hundred pages. It's hard for people to wade through like a hundred pages every month, you know? So, yeah, and it's just kind of a downfall of the system that I have today. It doesn't, doesn't facilitate that very well.
So in, in budget, you're thinking you'll propose that. So it'd be something maybe for us to see and take a look then?
Yeah. Potentially.
Excellent. That's all I had. Thank you.
We have a motion and second on financials, uh, on the payments. Roll call please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Item five, received project updates from the Department of Labor.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas. I'll update you on the Donald Street project. Our contractor has completed most of the work. The guardrail was installed yesterday. We're waiting on a few object marker signs. Those are signs we placed at that, on that guardrail, at that bridge location. The road should be open by close of business tomorrow. Our Tamaa Road project, work is still continuing on that. We're hopeful that in the next week that gets completed. I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about winter driving conditions. It seems like we may be getting some precipitation in the form of snow, blowing snow tonight and into the overnight hours into tomorrow morning. So it may be the first time that we are calling our employees out in the plows. So I just wanna give everybody some reminders that they should please slow down and remember that they're, you know, we are into winter driving conditions. Our crews typically run five AM till five PM. We do not have enough employees for a longer shift than that. We are, we are not out in the overnight hours unless we are called out in the emergency situation. We have talked extensively over the years with the sheriff's office on what constitutes an emergency situation. I urge the public to subscribe to our road notification system and also to check our Facebook site every morning. We often post early morning weather updates on our Facebook. Gabby, I think she's gonna talk here after me. She can certainly provide more information on that. So I ask that all drivers give snow plows a wide space, a wide gap. We now have three of our plows that have the blue lights on the snow plows. The studies, studies do show that those are very effective. Those are much more visible in poor, poor visibility conditions. We are working to update our fleet with all of the blue lights. We are getting a plow next spring that will also have the blue light. I just wanna say a few words about statewide trails. So the Iowa DOT, they do operate a twenty-four hour roadside clearing policy. So if you're in doubt, take a DOT route. They are going to be out there as needed to have clear roads. All of their plows now have the blue lights, so they are visible to drivers. In other talks we've had with the DOT, they are now taking a more proactive approach to closing the interstate system when it is needed. Just this, this winter, they are starting a new program where they are going to be giving a five to six hour notice to, to travelers on interstate systems. This does not include Interstate eighty or Highway twenty in our county. That they will be closing the interstate in five to six hours. They have now put gates on all of the interstate entrance ramps. They are not gating the exit ramps. I'm sorry, I have that backwards. They are gating the exit ramps, but not the entrance ramps. So they are trying to limit travelers on the interstate system when they are saying conditions do not allow it. And they are, will be giving much more proactive notifications up in the interstate system. And again, that does not include Highway twenty here in our county, but possibly in the future they will be adopting that. Again, those are for Iowa DOT operations. Can I answer any questions about our operations or my, my knowledge on DOT routes? Okay, thank you.
Hi, Gabby DeWitt, marketing coordinator. Yes, to Kathy's point about the road notifications, we talked about the Loomley that we use for social media scheduling. And the nice thing about that is we've been able to put graphics in kind of a holding pattern so that when Ryan talks with Wayne and gets updates on the roads, they can just drop those in at five AM when I may be not ready to drop something in and, and be timely about the road conditions and, and make it look, you know, still part of our brand and more eye-catching because it has a graphic with it instead of just text. So that's been one of the nice things about the scheduling system and it's really great that Ryan has access to it and is in communication with them on roads' conditions. But we do continue to post about signing up for the road notifications. Anytime we do messaging about the bridges or a certain road closure or something, we urge people to sign up for those road notifications so that they can get those to, directly to them, timely when they, when they happen. The other update I wanted to give was on the snowplow contest, which is much more hard-hitting news. It is open right now, taking public submissions for entries. We have over a hundred and fifteen submissions so far. The, we'll be taking entries through November thirtieth and then we'll narrow, I will send the total list to the roads department. They will narrow it down to fifteen and that's what the public will vote on. And public voting will start on December eighth with the closing on December fourteenth. So going well, we have some really creative submissions, so that's fun. And yeah, it'll be interesting to see what our next three plows are named. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board. Alu IT Director. Yesterday, we deployed all the new phones in the entire courthouse. It was a, it was a fun day. We, we got it done. It still needs some tweaks. It's not perfect yet, but it, it functions. And everyone has commented that the call quality is, is much, much better. And hopefully they, well, if they cut our fiber again, it won't affect us this time. So we'll still have phone service. So I sent out some instructions on that and I'll probably work more with staff just to kind of get all the little quirks and bugs out of it, but just wanna let you guys know, it is live. We only have three departments left to cut over, but I'll probably do it after Thanksgiving. Can't do anymore folks. Any questions?
You had your fill?
Huh?
You had your fill?
I've had my fill.
Can we ask questions, sir? Rory, do we have you come up? I've got a question about our security staff writing tickets. Is there a way that we can get them to hold off writing tickets while the board is in session?
Yeah, they're, they're not supposed to write tickets during the board meeting. It's right in there.
I got several people reached out to me after last week. One got two tickets.
Yeah, they're not supposed to.
While he's here for the board meeting.
Yep, it's in their post orders that during the board meeting, actually until one o'clock on Tuesdays, they're not supposed to write tickets.
I believe the staff downstairs at the door needs to be reminded of that.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
When they do, would you like them still sent to you or us to collect?
Yeah.
Like the richest pays, they want to rich.
Well, they're on versus one now, so.
And we, we're, they had an adoption day last week and the guards came down and asked if it would be okay that they not issue tickets during that period of time. So we try to work with them and obviously there's a lot of families coming in. So we told them just to hold off for a couple of hours to let those folks come in because that is a big deal. And we do get a lot of people coming in for that event, so. But yeah, it does, they have a schedule and it's right in there that during board meetings, they're not supposed to write tickets, so. You know, we, we do have them coming and going, so they just need a reminder.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
We have a minutes approval for November eighteenth, one from county. Sub move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Consent agenda. The items listed below will be acted upon with a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the public or the board requests that a specific item be considered separately.
Second.
Roll call please.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item eight, a resolution of the contract, Accessible LLC, Cedar Grove, New Jersey, for accessibility services for all county, all five county websites. In the amount of seven thousand dollars to be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by the website committee.
Yes, hi, Gabby DeWitt.
Thank you.
Sorry?
No, I said, I know you had discussion, possible board action when you submitted your request and, and I saw it was a resolution, so I was glad you were gonna speak to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I still don't know what to call board items, so Rory help me with that. So just a reminder, the Department of Justice in April of twenty twenty-four issued a Title II ruling that established a technical standard for digital communication accessibility. And because of the size of Black Hawk County, our, we need to show compliance or a path to compliance by April of twenty twenty-six. And so that's where this is coming from. I worked a lot with MICA from Public Health and we reviewed five vendors that had six very different approaches to accessibility. We checked references on all five of the vendors and we then presented to the website committee to make sure that they kind of agreed with, with the direction that we were suggesting that we go. We unanimously as a committee agreed that Accessible Blue was the best fit for Black Hawk County. It has the lowest rate with the most personalized approach. We can tailor it. The fact that we have five different websites, we certainly didn't want to work specifically with just the vendor for the Black Hawk County website because we are liable for all of the websites in Black Hawk County. So we needed something that would address all of that. The one thing with Accessible Blue is it was originally a retainer agreement and after talking with Michelle and after talking with some references, we really wanted a much more detailed scope of work. And so now it's a scope of work with two payments during, from the time period of January to June. And in that, it includes a manual audit of the website. They do have people on their staff that use assistive devices. So they are people who are the people that we're trying to communicate better for. They will help us build a culture of accessibility across Black Hawk County. It'll be train the trainer type thing where we break down the group, groups of staff that we've identified that create website materials, social media materials, and then also that may have to respond to legal claims against us. And they'll provide training that is tailored to that staff so that we can continue to do it past our agreement with them. And the scope addresses our top priorities, which includes the end user audits of all five websites, the customized training, and then tech support for our team. And do we have any questions? I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to do this because once we got to the agreement part and they sent us the scope of work, which I forwarded you, they've now taken the retainer agreement, which I also forwarded to you, and changed it to now being a contract with two payments. So I probably need to have, like Mike had reviewed it in September and, and signed off on the wording of it, but I probably need to have it reviewed one more time. So I don't know if you can approve it pending, pending that or if it just needs to go on the agenda the next week.
So is the scope of work that you're talking, that digital accessibility compliance plan?
Yes.
That which you were agreeing to?
Right. And so now he has taken that retainer agreement that we originally reviewed and Mike approved as, as working for us. He's now taken that scope of work and combined it into that and shown that there's be two payments due in February and June.
And the total for all of this is?
Seven thousand.
Seven complete?
Yeah, and that would come out of the professional services line item that we have in the marketing budget.
I know, I thought reading through it, it was a little unclear when it was kind of like, we'll determine at some point in time if more is needed or whatever and I was between parties. And it was like, so it's more than what was stated.
And that I think is because they do tend to work on a retainer type focus. And also, our website's kind of like an old house. You don't know what you're going to find until you start digging in. And so I anticipate, you know, that there will be things like that that, that we find. But we're really hoping that some of the training that we receive for them are things that we can remediate ourselves.
Is it, I, I don't know if we received anything on the proposals that were received or determined. Did you do a scoring matrix type of thing and we're just in discussions?
Um, not, not a formal scoring. What we did, and I, I could send you the slides that we use for the website committee, but we, we based it on the type of proposal they were suggesting. Some of them were strictly on helping us make sure our, that we had a plan and our policies showed accessibility, but not so much the training of staff. Others offered a lot of training, but at a cost that we would not be able to make a dent in the number of people who needed the training. Others suggested adding widgets to our website that would make us compliant, but from all the research I've done, those widgets actually only provide about thirty percent, catch a thirty percent of accessibility issues and can sometimes cause more problems for people who use assistive devices because they've already set their system up to work. And then if you put a widget on top, it can sometimes fight against the assistive device they're using. And so that can, that's why we would like to have kind of an expert in the field before we go any direction that way. He was the lowest cost per hour at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And then he helped us figure out of the things that we listed as our top priorities, approximately how many hours that would take.
Do they like references where they've helped other clients?
Yes, so I, we checked about two to three references for all of the, all of the vendors that we worked with and they were all municipalities with the exception of one who had worked with a lot of school districts. Colorado, California, and one other state are way ahead on this accessibility. They created state laws way before the Department of Justice created the federal mandate. And so the school districts that we talked to in Colorado had been already doing this for a year. And so that was one of the references. But for the most part, it was municipalities. And with this particular one with Accessible Blue, it was municipalities.
Cities or counties?
County, a county in North Carolina and a city, yes.
And I'm glad they resolved the retainer thing because I was gonna say, somebody taking our funds and putting them into account and then just drawing them down and letting us know when they were used isn't typically a government.
Yes, that is the feedback I got from our finance director.
Glad to hear it. I'm very glad to hear it.
And they were very, they were very open to that as well and, you know, willing to work with us in that.
Oh, that's great. Because I was gonna say, I'd be surprised if they'd have, I mean, but not surprising is totally that from New Jersey. If they wouldn't have maybe said to us too that, no, they didn't do things that way. And maybe they're used to working with some of the people in that area, but it's just like.
Well, I know the, the, the county in Wake, in North Carolina that I spoke, but they did do a retainer. And I think it just probably depends, but I, yes, I gave them that information that we would need to do kind of a structured pay, payment system and, and they were willing to work with us.
Well, I said creative financing, I understand, but I just was surprised. And because it is such a new topic for us and a new assignment area of what, what we're getting into even.
Yes.
And it was just like, okay, did do this on just retainer and we'll just see how, how it works and you tell us later when we're out of money. Seemed like a poor practice, so.
Yeah, yes, yep.
I'd feel better if we had Mike do another review.
Okay.
And we had to file paperwork.
Okay.
Just, just for our reassurance.
Yes, yep.
But yeah, I'm glad you're moving forward with it.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, April's gonna be here before we know it. And, and really, again, I think I've said this before, but accessibility is like, I think somebody used the example of cybersecurity. It's a moving target. It's something, it's not like something that we're going to check mark and say we're done with this. We will always be working on this. I've heard some feedback that the, the government is, is maybe dialing back some of these requirements or like the cost that maybe, because especially smaller communities, it can be quite expensive. And, and that's what we found in the vendors, you know, we, we ranged anywhere from over twenty thousand to the seven thousand and then eighty thousand for one that just wanted to make us a new website and skip fixing the one that we have. So, so it really was a, a pretty large range. And so that, you know, if, if we hadn't had that line item in our marketing budget, we would've had to find it somewhere else.
Well, if you include the, the new documentation and when you submit it for the next agenda.
Okay, so then just put it on the agenda.
And have Mike review, sure. Yep, thank you.
For a resolution or discussion possible for it? For a resolution or discussion possible for it?
Well, nothing more to change.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, we can discuss it anything in resolution too and just not approve things, so you're good.
Very good, okay, then I'll, I'll put that on for next week, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks committee too, I guess Gabby gets to be the spokesperson for the committee then.
Yes, I think I am the spokesperson for the committee. Yes, Al would've stepped up if I didn't help.
So you're not gonna take action today?
Go watch. Item nine A, resolution of the proposal received from WBC Mechanical of Waterlilable for emergency boiler repair at the Pinecrest building in the amount of five thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Be approved as recommended by Rory Given, Facilities Director.
Good morning Board, Rory Given, Facilities Director. This is a boiler system that was put in in two thousand and ten over at the Pinecrest facility. We had WBC in and discovered that we had a control board that went bad. Not only that, we also learned that the control panel no longer had a retrofit kit. So historically, these control boards are in the neighborhood of sixteen hundred dollars, but this one is a little bit more. We do also have to replace the control panel as well, so, emergency repair. Any questions? Thank you.
Roll call please.
I got Linda motion. Thank you.
Roy started talking, I think, before we got it out.
I know, he was anxious. Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Kurtinback?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
All.
Yes. Item nine B, motion to the Director of County Audit to advertise for public hearing to be held at nine oh five on Tuesdays, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five in Boardroom two oh one at Black Hawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterlilable. Unproposed ordinance number seven seven dash three zero two requested by Donald and Jennifer Wardle to rezone four point seven three acres of land from A Ag District to A R Ag Residential Districts to create three residential lots located south of seven eight five one Big River. So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Item nine C, motion to the Director of County Audit to advertise for public hearing to be held at nine oh seven on Tuesday, December sixteenth, two oh five, twenty twenty-five, in Boardroom two oh one at Black Hawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterlilable. Unproposed ordinance number seven seven dash three zero three. We kept request by Kevin Keegan to rezone one point five one acres of land from A Agricultural District to A R Agricultural Residential District to split off an existing farmhouse from the rest of the property located at seven three zero seven East Ryanville. So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Item nine D, discussion of possible board action to issue notice, intent to award funding from the opioid settlement funds for the period of January one twenty-six through June thirty twenty twenty-seven. So move.
I don't think we had any action probably to take for certain, I think I was just kind of throwing on there for updates and see where we're all at into submitting our information and anything that Michelle wants to add to it, I guess, please do. But I said, this particular one, I know that we kind of put a shorter timeline, I think, just thinking about state funding was gonna be something released, correct?
Yes, they, the state shortly after we released our applications and wanted them back and we were planning to award in the next few weeks, then the state issued a grant opportunity that I believe those applications are due next, either Tuesday or Wednesday. So for an agency, if we were going to, if we were ready, you know, to award today, it might save an agency from submitting the same application. But I know I've, I've only received scores from two of you. We do have four applications, which is exciting, and they're, they also, it was very interesting. They happened to use each of them, used its different strategies on our approved strategy list of things we felt there was a gap that we wanted to fund. So that was kind of exciting for the committee when we saw it happen that way. At least one of them is, was quite large, so.
Yeah, I think that's.
And I don't know if you want, we didn't really have time to schedule presentations for today. If you want to have presentations from the four or any of the four.
I, and that's really what kind of helped me up. I could've got the mine to you, I apologize that I didn't, but it was like, I went back to review them more thoroughly. And there was obviously the two that were the low funded requests that were easier to go through and they were, thanks for the information that everything was provided. But I said, I myself didn't really have any questions on those two, but as we got to the larger ones, I did for One City United and I also did, especially I guess when the sheriff's office is requesting four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I guess I definitely wanted to hear from Nate and Jessica, I guess, about that and answer questions that we might have. I know we had an amount that we set, you know, and so we were pleased that the requests all came in under what we thought we'd give out. But I also think it's important to recognize that these funds aren't limited and we want them to last as long as we can and not just give out funding because it was requested. It needs to be accountable, I guess. But I was, there were several things in the sheriff's particularly, and I thought, even One City United, I'd love to hear an update from them. But as I read it, it was, I was thinking of the Momentum program and there actually, most of the funds that I thought were requested were for the Recovery Cafe or I'm not sure I have that right, but whatever. And so just a little bit more maybe of discussion or, you know, just conversation with them, I guess, of how these work together, I thought would be helpful to me. But I, I'm certainly can go forward with, I liked all the programs, it wasn't bad. It was just really, like, I know our next step would probably be the funding after we did say, like, if we liked all four and thought they were great, let's use all four to what level. And I just thought more information from them would be helpful to me before getting to that stage.
With, with Momentum, they're just looking to expand the classroom because of waiting less than such a demand right now. And so they're trying to get more classroom space so they can get more people into it. That's one part of it at least, so the Recovery Cafe separate from that.
Well, I know they put in their numbers for Momentum and that's why I was very interested to see that. I like seeing that information and when they provided it to us before, but I just thought, okay, and how that was gonna work with the recovery. And I know they talked about having some money for funding a building, you know, and that wasn't in our request, but I think that was there, that being important too. So I was just kind of putting all the pieces together.
Gotcha.
So that was all my thoughts on that.
For, for the balance of the finances for opioid stuff, what do we have to work with to disperse?
So our committee was suggesting that we use seven hundred and fifty thousand for this eighteen month period. That's more than we will anticipate collecting this year barring, you know, new settlements that send cash quickly, which you just never know. We do have, there is a million dollars, probably more than that now, at least one point two million in, sitting in the bank account too. But yeah, it's just deciding how long you hope those services, how we can fund them and how that would work.
And there were several components of the sheriffs that were, like I said, one involved Pathways, which we've done a contract with Pathways before, but that's separate, I guess. And, and I guess the one I'm really questioning is more so, and that was like a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand were the NAF Care staff. And quite honestly, we've got a pretty great, good sized contract with NAF Care currently. And I know Nate had recently talked about, you know, changing some of the staffing allocations or whatever in there and reducing some costs. And I, just those kinds of things I thought would be helpful to have dialogue with Nate on or Jessica's, a combination of whoever or whatever, some of those types of things. I don't know. I'm glad I'm not alone in the last three, there's three others that haven't got there.
Do we want to ask, do we want to ask them to come next week with, with a readiness to take action? You know, depending on, on, you know, the answers to some questions, but to Michelle's point, that there's probably some benefit to, for them to know where dollars are at in order to be ready to apply for other dollars as well.
I, I do believe that that state deadline was, was next Tuesday, so I'm not sure that that, we would really get it, limit time.
And most would be putting out their application anyway, whether we gave or not, because they're, most everybody said in theirs, they're based on whether or not they got full request funding, were they going to have other sources and units, I would assume. Any grant I've ever written, you've always applied, you don't wait and see if you get one first. So that, that timeline, but if it works for Nate and the others to come too, that is kind of.
Can I just tell you what Caitlin talked about last Tuesday?
Yeah.
She, she said she was hoping that scoring was completed by the twentieth to take action on the December second.
Yeah, she's told us that too, but that same reason, same one Michelle's giving, yeah.
For that state deadline.
Yeah. No, thanks.
Well, I was gonna ask Caitlin, what is, if we wait, what does that do? If we, perhaps we get presentations next week and we make final decisions, does that mess anything up?
So, I, I guess my perspective on that is that if the applicants are informed that they received the funding, that they, that may save them work in applying for the state funds. So it would not necessarily add additional burden because maybe they're already writing their applications, but that might help them decide whether they're gonna submit one or not.
Okay.
You got yours? No. Well, that's why I thought we did the scoring, you know, and I guess that's just where, where they fall in our rating. But then it's like, that is the next step.
The next, the next part is discussion.
Funding, yeah.
I don't think that this.
And it's not, there's only the four, so it makes it easier.
We got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand were requested.
We still, yeah.
I mean, one of the stewards of it, not to, not to say that we're, it's an automatic approval, just because it's under, well, the budget, but, it's also four applications, so I would anticipate that. I'd be, I would be comfortable next week to hear presentations and be ready to take action at some meeting.
Well, we were comfortable, the only thing I have to say is we were comfortable getting our, our scores in by now too, but we didn't. And I, that's what I'm just saying.
Sure, yeah, I think the, the scores are a part of the process, but at the same time, the, the scores are, are espe, are especially important if we have more dollars requested than dollars able to give. If, if we are ultimately comfortable funding at a hundred percent of the requests, yes. But in the next week, I'm sure that we can all get our scores in as well. We can all get our scores in as well, if we don't get our scores in, if, if one or two or even three members of the board don't get our scores in and we hear presentations and we take action, I don't think that we have to hold because a couple of members haven't gotten their, their scores in.
No, no, I think it's something you don't, I was gonna say too, and I don't need to hear all four. If so, if everybody wants all four, that's fine, if, if there are certain ones others do, I guess those two larger ones were the two for me.
Chris and I got our, talking too about getting them done last week from Caitlin at the health department meeting.
That's who the two are, okay.
My, my pleasure, I'll get, I'm one who didn't get them done.
Neither did I.
I'll get them done tonight, and if I don't, I'll cater, cater food next week. There's incentive now.
Hey Al, did you hear that? Shut his IT stuff down.
Honey, I'm gonna be home late.
You know, if we, this is Chris, if we do get to next week, and there's still questions on, you know, the largest one from the sheriff's office, that wouldn't preclude us from taking action on the other three and then still waiting for more time to sort through the largest request.
Good point, Chris, yeah, sure, the sheriff's office.
Here's another thing that they're out there, just so as to not delay, like, if anybody had an interest in going to them, I would say I'd be made to go over and meet with Jess and go through the process through the jail anyway on my own. And I also haven't got a chance to do that, and I thought, I'm pretty confident they'd be more than open if you weren't, if anybody was interested in doing that.
I just thought with Palau Days, you're probably not gonna, you know, seconds could be here before we know it, that's all it's.
And I believe our original timeline was a little bit longer, let me up. So we, we were, you know, kind of accelerating things and we just aren't ready. So I don't want you to feel like you have to.
In addition to what Michelle just said, the contract start date is projected to be January first, just as a reminder.
So are we hoping, are, are, do we want to ask all four applicants to be here? Or do we want to look at the, the two largest or the ones that Linda had named?
I'd say just the two largest, you know, it's the only questions I had was with those.
Yeah, we, we've already had recent presentations on the other two programs, so.
Perfect. So we'll ask One City United and Sheriff's Office to join us on the second to, to discuss their plans.
And come hungry.
And the other. Do we have any other reports or information from the board?
I got a couple items. Next Tuesday, no, next Wednesday, the third, the ICAN district meetings for supervisors being held in Dubuque. I have another meeting scheduled in Dubuque, but I didn't know, if we go to that, can we smed our mileage for going over for that or what's?
It's been pointed out from what.
Michelle, let me through that probably, it probably made it in some clarity on what it's for or what you're talking about.
Yeah, ICAN has district meetings for supervisors. And then the, for this one, I don't know if the quarterly or what I'm still learning about.
Oh, the district six, that's the district six, yeah.
But I got another thing going on in Dubuque and I thought, well, I could drive over for that and include this in it, so. What is ICAM? Is that what you say, ICAM?
Yeah, ICAN.
What is that? It's Iowa counties.
Yeah. I was like, it's the district six meeting of the, of the counties in district six.
ICAN or is it ISAC?
I think it might be ISAC.
I think it's ISAC.
ICAN, I think.
It is ISAC, because I talked to Lobbys this week, he asked me if I'm gonna be there. So, yeah, ISAC. So we're in, I didn't even know we're in, we're in a district here? Yes.
Yes, ISAC District Six Supervisor Meeting.
We can resend the email and see, I mean, if there is an email.
Do you want me to send the email to you?
Thank you.
Probably resend it.
That's just for refresh, yeah, thank you.
All right, next item, follow up from the last week, we had the presentation on post bid language. The folks with Lynn County have graciously offered to give us some insight and nerd process in what they're doing with post bid. And we rescheduled that to next Monday at three P M. There'll be a Zoom link coming out, hopefully you get it today, I'm gonna need Al to help me get that put together. But I want to continue that education and questions of what's going on with other areas with the post bid language.
We just couldn't ask a question, where you, you said we could zoom in on it, but we could also, like, if we were at the courthouse, could meet in downstairs conference room or one of the small conference rooms.
Yeah, I, I don't know, would, would it be best if we're just zooming in or if we do one of the rooms, we can do that as well. Leave that up to staff if you wanna do that, we'll see if we can register, request a room, do that as well. Working with the Cedar Valley Coalition, they asked us to the county to do something with the health department as far as their handout when we go to DC in February, or I guess it's first week in March. So Caitlin put something together, I just received this morning, accordinging that to the coalition and how they can incorporate that into their presentation as well, so that's in the works.
Did you copy us?
I'm still trying to get it all put together.
Oh, you're putting it.
Yeah, I'll get the, what Caitlin's presentation, I'll get that sent out to all of you as well. We're trying to find out how it's gonna fit into the Cedar Valley Coalition's, their. We're trying to find out how it's gonna fit into the Cedar Valley Coalition's, their presentation. And the last thing I got here is I've connected with TJ. There's a lot of talking in recently about property taxes, so TJ, I'm gonna connect with him again, probably one in Jan, into January, one in February, doing property valuation presentations. I would like it to be something that's endorsed by the board in doing this. Again, just communicating with folks on how their property evaluations are set. It's, right now, we're just looking at a timeline. We don't have anything specific yet, but probably getting one in Waterloo, one in Cedar Falls. But as we get stuff lined up, I'd, again, just like to have plus the board and get the staff involved with that as well.
And have more than TJ, is that what you mean? Is that what you're talking about?
No, this one just with property evaluations.
Oh, okay.
Anything else from other board members? Anything else to the jury?
Somebody?
Second.